You guys good over there?
Something twenty-four hours. My assistant said, "Kristen, what the Christ, what's going on here?" She walks over, she puts Mike, it's tomorrow at four thirty.
Okay, well, welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting, Thursday, October tenth. This meeting is being broadcast. And there is local media available at the meeting this evening. If anyone wishes to make a video or audio recording of the meeting, please let myself or one of the other members of the committee know. First up, on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. We do have a set of minutes from the regular Milford School Committee meeting, September twenty-sixth. Everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
A motion to accept from Mike, a second from Scott, all in favor. Unanimous in favor. Next up, we have announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do members have anything? Anything, Bob?
Nothing this evening?
Nothing.
Just an out homecoming. We won't be meeting again before then.
Good point, yeah. First Annual Milford Homecoming Event is coming up a week from tomorrow, October eighteenth. Very exciting event. We have a lot of special events planned. There's a tailgating party that will be taking place in the courtyard here at the high school. I think there's, and help me out here, Bob, there's tickets available for those that register and sign up for the volleyball game, the girl soccer game, as well as the Milford football game that evening against Oliver Ames.
That's exactly right, yeah. And we have a couple giveaways in there, some raffles. So it'll be a lot of fun. Fun to have the alumni come back. Hope that everyone can make it out. It's, yeah, the barbecue, as you mentioned, in the back courtyard. And there'll be reserved parking also for alumni. There'll be signs and people outside indicating where to park.
Special gifts for those who register early, I understand, too?
Absolutely.
We won't let the cat out of the bag.
We will give special gifts for those who register early.
Very good.
Mr. Chaky is being a former alumni.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, I hope that there will be a good turnout, looking forward to it.
I think so, thank you very much.
Thank you, and for all those that have been working hard planning it, you know, special thanks to them as well.
I'll extend that, thank you.
Next up, we have invitation to speak. Is there anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing no one, we will get right on to the Woodland School Building update. And we do have some special guests here tonight that are gonna provide us with that update. Guys wanna come right up and have a seat? You can pull a couple of extra chairs up there if you need to.
So as they're taking the table, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, just a quick introduction, they'll probably say more about themselves in a moment, but we have David Krawitz. David, he's our project, owner's project manager. We have Bobby Williams and Matt LaRue, both architects from HMFH on the project. Aldo Chaky, who's the chairman of the School Building Committee, finance committee member, longtime Milford resident, former superintendent. What else should I say about you?
A man who needs no introductions.
Is there anybody you haven't had that is associated with the schools? I don't think there's anything.
Not really.
No, or the town, for that matter.
And joining us, too, I believe, is Craig Gisely, who's in the back of the room in the shadows.
Craig, come on up, this is your school, buddy.
Come on up, don't be shy. Well, gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening. We're super excited to hear, hear about where we're at and take a look at some of the diagrams that you brought as well. So please.
I guess I'll start. These guys do the fun stuff and the sexy stuff that you'll wanna talk about, so I'll try and keep it quick, but I'm trying to bring everyone up to speed. Not everyone has attended various meetings we've had, but if I'm talking about things you all know, please cut me off, or if you want more information, just interrupt and ask. I'm just here to provide information for your benefit. So I think you all know, this project is a partnership with the state in the form of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The state is, one's a very robust program. There are a number of requirements we have to meet and do meet to gain their participation, and that creates a sort of set schedule, certain submittals and deadlines. It also brings a sort of rigor to the project in that we have to do estimates at regular intervals to make sure that we have a realistic budget and then manage to that budget and a realistic schedule and manage to that schedule. And there's every evidence that that's gonna work very well in this project. Just last Wednesday, the state, or the MSBA Board of Directors formally voted to approve the latest submittal which allows the architecture team to proceed into what's called schematic design, which is the phase they're just beginning. And it's, in some ways, the most important phase, 'cause it's when the design is basically set, at least as far as the major elements, all the program, how the building will look, and most importantly, how much it will cost. So if you have a question on cost, we don't have a firm answer, because at the end of this phase, we will have cost estimates from two separate estimators. One, the Architects Cost Estimator, and separately, we procure one through a construction manager we've hired to build the project, Shawmet Design and Construction. They're not designers, that's just their name. They are excellent builders, however, and they guide us on logistics, phasing, scheduling, buildability issues, bidding practice, and how to get the project done most cost-effectively and with the least impact to the school. We are building on an, it's a large site, but it's an occupied site. We need to keep Woodland in full operation during construction. That's not a trivial thing. We have to make sure that students in particular and everyone else is kept safe during construction. So we've, you know, hired them, both as a builder and as a consultant, to advise us throughout the process and make sure that in every aspect of the planning, we take into account those concerns. So I guess I was told to cover a couple of other things here. So we're in schematic design. We had one public forum, which I think some of you did attend. The next one is Thursday, the twenty-fourth, so please do attend and put out the word. We like people to come, we want the community to be aware of the project, we hope parents get excited about the project. And we're building a wonderful new school, we hope, you know, we'd like everyone to be involved, we'd like their input. If someone has some thought we may not have addressed, we'd like to hear it early when we can still capture it in the planning. So now's the good time to come forth and speak. Other than that, we will, you know, finalize the budget, as I said, based on the estimates that are procured in November, and we will formally submit to the state on December twelfth the schematic design package. So this is not an endless phase. Each phase, the architect is under the gun to produce a lot of information in fairly short order. We have met with a huge representation with Craig and Bob's assistance, you know, of representatives from each of the three grade levels, the third and fourth grades who are currently at Woodland, and the fifth grade who will be coming to Woodland but aren't there now. Different department heads, you know, representatives from all the different academic groups and other facilities groups in the school, and all the other groups in the town such as police and fire and DPW and so forth, to make sure that we understand whether it be safety concerns, security concerns, whatever it may be, they all factor into the project. So we've tried to cover broadly, but if anyone thinks of something we may have missed, please let us know. So unless there are any questions about schedule, budget, scope, process, and if you have them, I'll still be here, I'll turn it over to Matt and Bobby to talk about the building design.
Well, thank you for having us. We're excited to be here today and to present to you the progress that we've made in the design to this date. I think it would help if I could get up and speak to the board directly. Do I need to bring a microphone with me? I can take it out? Okay. Matt LaRue again from HMFH Architects, and Bobby Williams from my firm are both here tonight. We've been working on this project for several months now. It's at a point where we have a good sense of the shape of the building, its location on the site, and what it's gonna hold and how it's gonna function in terms of delivering a facility that's compatible with the educational philosophy of the Woodland School and the district overall. So what you're seeing, what you're gonna see are really just kind of the planning diagrams at this stage, as we develop it a little bit further, the next steps, it'll start to be a little bit more three-dimensional, a little bit more visual in understanding what the building is actually gonna look like as a three-dimensional form. So we're working with the site that we have for the Woodland School. It's a good site, it's fairly large, it has some nice features on it, but the building is gonna be occupied during construction, which bared upon many of the decisions that have had to be made so far. The existing school occupies this corner of the site to the north. This is North Vine Street here. While that's in operation, the parking and the drives and the access will all need to be in operation as well. So it made sense to take advantage of the open field that we have on the south part of the site to site the new school, and it made for a good sighting of a building, but it also made for a very good situation in terms of separating the construction from the school that's in operation in terms of the noise and the level of disturbance that would happen to the students and staff. So you see here in orange, the footprint of the building, approximately where the field is today, there's a detention pond that was built with the existing school, which we are looking at keeping as part of our stormwater management system that will occupy the center of the site. But around that, we're configuring loops for the buses to drop off and for parents to drop off, as well as for the parking for the school itself. So what that leaves is a play space on the south side of the building, which is a good place for it, 'cause it's a good solar orientation to be outdoors, and it's away from all the traffic. When this building is completed, we'll be able to tear down the existing school after the third and fourth graders move into the building and the fifth graders come from Stacy. And this site will be turned into an open space, which replicates the kind of the size of the field that exists on the site today. It'll be a large field, and it could be also used for community use as well. Now, just jumping to the building itself, the building has really taken form out of, it's a response to a lot of the feedback that we've received from the school, from Craig, from Bob, and the teachers and the staff that we've met with. It's evolved out of some of the kind of more philosophical discussions that we've had around the teaching curriculum and how the building is a response to that, and some of the ideas that we've brought to it as architects who do many school projects about the nature of the type of teaching that can take place at this grade level, especially in today's climate. One of the ideas that we've been advocating for this is to provide some space within the building that gives the teachers opportunities to teach outside of their four-walled classroom. So they'll still have their conventional classroom, it'll still have a teaching wall and generous space within it for different configurations and different ways of teaching, but there's a variety of other spaces immediately outside of those classrooms where the teachers can engage in types of activities that are harder to accommodate within that typical space more easily. For instance, project-based learning really advocates, you know, the hands-on kind of approach to learning, and, you know, it might involve being engaged in larger collaborative projects. So how do you accommodate that? So one of the things that we've brought to the project is this idea of what we call the Learning Commons, and that's what you're seeing down the center of the building here. It's really a flexibly-used space, it has a variety of kind of functions that can happen within it, but it's all there for the teachers within each classroom to bring their students out and engage in projects out there. And it could be projects that happen at the size of one classroom together, it could be smaller groups broken up, working together in teams with teacher supervision. It could be that there are classes that come together, so if pairs of teachers wanna collaborate or team teach on something in particular, there's spaces for that to happen. So the other part of that that's shaped this, the plan of the building, is the idea that in Woodland today and in Stacy, there's a team-teaching methodology that happens. There's four or five classroom teachers who form a team, so we've taken that idea to heart. At each grade level, we have three teams of five regular classrooms, and within the plan, those teams occupy a cluster. So on this end of the building, there's five regular classrooms clustered together. In the center, there's another cluster, and on this end of the building, there's a third cluster. So three clusters each grade for nine clusters throughout the project. I just should mention that what you're seeing here on this floor is the first floor for third graders. There'll be, there's a second floor plan, I'll show you in a minute, for the fourth graders, and then the fifth graders will be on the third floor. So we have clusters within each floor, we have a Learning Commons. Within each part of the Learning Commons is what we call the Project Area that serves those clusters. That's made up of loose furnishings, counter space, storage, access to water, access to technology and electricity, and it's an open area that the students pass through, they can see what others are working on, there's a kind of exchange that would happen in that way. And then there's a smattering of smaller, more specialized-type spaces. On this floor, we have a room called the Book Collection, where that would house the actual books from the library, where the rest of the space of the traditional library is really what's distributed throughout these Learning Commons. There are other spaces I'll get to on the upper floors, which are other support spaces. And another thing to note that we're providing are these smaller spaces between each pair of classrooms, which we call a small group instruction room. And that is there to allow the teachers to pull out smaller groups of students into an enclosed space that's acoustically sound, that they can focus on a certain activity or project. It's immediately adjacent to their classroom, they have supervision over that space, or that specialists could come from other areas of the building and pull a student out of the classroom and work with them right there, instead of having to go to a different part of the building to work with them. So it's the variety of these project areas and other types of spaces in the Learning Commons, and then these small group instruction rooms, which help to supplement what goes on in the typical classroom. On this floor, I'll just walk through the other features. On one end of the building is the main entry. There's a lobby, there's a point of control at the administrative office where the secretaries will sit, and then the offices for the administrative purposes, and a large space for the cafeteria. We call it a cafetorium, because we're providing a stage. It's a flat floored space, it's for dining, but it also double-function as a performance space for some of the theater and music programs that they will have at Woodland. There's kitchen and back-of-house areas in that end of the building as well. And on the other end of the building is the phys ed features. There's a gymnasium, large enough for a regular-sized basketball court, that'll hold two teaching stations. And then there's another room which supplements that, it's called the Wellness Center. The school population of nine hundred and eighty-five students is a large population, and when you work out the schedule of the school day, they really need three phys ed teaching stations, and so they're able to get that by having the two stations in the gymnasium and then the one station in the Wellness Center. That Wellness Center will, is a multipurpose space, it'll function for gross motor activities, it could be gymnastics or wall climbing, ball play, it could be also used for other purposes when it's not specifically needed for phys ed use. Now going up to the second floor, it's a very similar layout in the academic wing, as it was on the first floor. There's the Learning Commons, and in here, we're starting to introduce some openings within the floors that allow natural light to come in from skylights or clear-story lights above, so that within these open project spaces, there is some daylight that enhances the experience of the space. I should also mention that for the special education functions, those are also distributed throughout the academic wing. Within each cluster, one regular-sized classroom is for special education purposes, or in some cases, it's English language learner classroom or an OTPT room, but that regular-sized classroom completes a kind of six-classroom cluster that supplements the five regular classrooms at each grade level.
Just a quick question. I apologize. So how many of those classrooms are, so are they sort of the lighter peach colors? Can you just kind of highlight, just for the benefit of not just ourselves, but also those that are viewing, which ones those are for? Obviously, we have a pretty robust special education program here in town, as well as in ESL program, so I think that would be helpful.
Sure. So this lighter color here, for instance, is the Milestone Classroom. There's a therapeutic classroom here, and this is an ELL full-size classroom. There's some other lighter colored special ed spaces. This is a sped pull-out room, which is a kind of medium-sized space, and then sped inclusion rooms, which are kind of distributed throughout as well. On the ground floor, there is the OTPT room down here, and a medium-sized ELL room, Milestones, and then the Rainbow Room.
And then those light blue rooms that are on the side as well?
Those are the toilets, so the skeng toilets on each end of the building, and it's repeated that way on each floor. There's also some other smaller toilets throughout, yes.
Is access to the school, the only way access to the school is through the administration building, or call it the front building, and is it all on the first floor?
Correct. So normal access to the school is through here. The students generally will enter through here, although it's possible, we're still talking about how it can be configured, but they may enter the other end of the building where there's a secondary entrance, but all visitors would come through this point here.
The reason I ask that question, Bob, is, you know, with Donnie and the Safety and Security Committee, one of the issues we're having is access, people coming into the building, you know, if they're gonna come in from the front of the building, that second area there could be a key point of where somebody could absolutely no way get into the main school.
Yeah, we talked about, maybe, can you just talk about how the security features that you had envisioned for that?
I'm sorry not to take you off track, but I'm just...
Well, I mean, it's obviously a very important issue and becoming more important every day. So the idea is that this, well, people will enter into what's really a fastuville, they won't be able to get through the second set of doors, those will normally be locked. They'll get buzzed into the administrative office, and if they wanna enter the school, they have to go through the office to get to the school. There's also sets of doors on either side of that lobby which can be closed down, and the academic spaces can be secured and isolated from that entrance area.
Okay.
The entrance on this end of the building is normally locked. It provides a point of access for after-hours use or weekend use, for instance, for the gymnasium. These doors can be opened, and there's a set of doors here which will secure the rest of the school from that space.
So that's a full-size gymnasium?
That's right, yeah. It's a little over six thousand square feet, it has some room for a set of bleachers.
Okay, that you can pull out and not take up the spaces in, like, are the...
That's right. They wouldn't go over the corner.
Just so, point of reference, so it's in comparison to, like, Stacy's school, roughly the same size?
Yeah, it's roughly the same size. If you took away, I think Stacy has bleachers on both sides.
Yeah, but you can't open them.
So it's just on one side. If you took away the ones that go onto the court, and you just add the other ones, it's the same size inside.
Great, thank you.
The other big feature on the second floor is above the administrative and kitchen areas, the spaces for the arts program, the art classrooms and the music classrooms. Bob and Craig and the others really talked about wanting to have these concentrated together through this kind of the sense of the arts as an active center to the school, which is a nice way to enliven and provide a kind of place for the school. They both look over the double-height space of the cafetorium, so as you come into that space and as you come into the lobby of the school, really, you might even get a sense of the activity of that arts center, a shared experience at the heart of the school.
It's just more logistical than anything else. Go back to my high school physics class, heat rises, and we're gonna put art rooms over a kitchen. I'm just thinking about some of our buildings right now, and, you know, some of the concerns that I'm sure Craig will hear from some of the teachers of, it's a thousand degrees in my room in the June months with the windows, and then when the kitchen's going, it's tough to hear, so how have you, I'm sure you've addressed those things, but I think that'd be beneficial to hear.
Yes, the kitchen will have a very sophisticated mechanical system that serves that space itself, so the kitchen would never get to the point where it gets hot and is then affecting the spaces around it. It'll have a hood, which is evaporating all of the heat, and then it'll have makeup air for the space itself.
And how about noise?
The noise, it's a good point. Well, we have a very good acoustical consultant as part of our design team. They review all the spaces and look at adjacencies, and then make recommendations for the construction types for isolating those spaces from each other. So in this case, he might recommend certain treatments to the underside of the floor slab below those spaces.
Okay. Trying to save your phone calls, Craig.
So is that second story above the cafetorium open to that hallway, or is it the idea to be sort of partitioned off with glass, or has that been decided?
Currently, it's thought to be open.
Open space.
So there's a kind of balcony feeling to it, yeah.
Okay.
Some of the other spaces that were starting to appear that weren't on the first floor, there's a small intimate story room where a teacher can bring a group of students and sit in a more enclosed, quiet space. There's a media space, which would be outfitted with good AV and technology, and is a space that you could show videos or movies or other AV-intensive functions. There's a small amphitheater down here, which would be kind of built-in risers with carpeted tops that students could sit around, and they could have small performances or a demonstration or a guest speaker come and talk to them. So really, it's just creating a variety of these kinds of uses, yes.
Is there an elevator or ramp access to the upper floors? How would you use the upper floors?
There'll be one elevator located here, so if you come in the front door, it'll be immediately adjacent to where you are, and that'll give you full handicap access to everywhere. The only area of the building that's not on a regular floor level is on the first floor, where we have the stage, and that will have a ramp that brings you up to that stage level. And finally, on the third, the top level, it's really a repetition of the same floor plan in the academic wing. There's nothing over the second floor of the two-end volume, so it's just the fifth-grade classrooms and the other support spaces at that level. In terms of the special education functions up here, there's two language-based classrooms, a large ELL classroom sped pull-out, and some reading and speech smaller spaces.
Locker, where would the lockers, like, lockers in student storage, third, fourth, fifth have that issue now?
Right.
So I can't see as far away. I'm assuming they're right outside the classroom?
Yeah, so the walls along the classrooms will have lockers.
Each of them have, okay.
And as a way to segregate the project areas off from the circulation space, we use lockers there, load lockers, so they form a nice surface to put a... use lockers there, load lockers, so they form a nice surface to put a cap on top of that could be used for displaying student work.
And it may be too early in the process, and so forgive me if this is the case. Are they combination lock lockers, or are they, I mean, I'm, listen, I, Craig, you worked in middle schools, I mean, fifth graders are, it's, it's a holy terror for a fifth grader to try and get a combination lock open. I have a fourth grader, I wouldn't give him a lock right now, and I can't imagine trying to give third graders a lock. So if it's too early in the process, that's fine, but just how's that gonna be addressed?
We've talked about that now. Currently, they have hooks, so...
Okay. Yeah, it's open cubbies right now, so...
I don't see any for locks, and we've talked about either having bases on the locks or just leaving them open cubby.
Okay.
The lockers that we do specify generally have the ability that you can even put padlocks if you wanted to, but generally, they just...
Just pop open.
Yeah, we saw, we saw the carpeted schools that we visited some months ago, which is somewhat similar in designs of some of the areas, they didn't have locks on any.
Good.
And they didn't seem to be a problem for the students, because we asked them, they didn't even realize they didn't have locks.
Yeah, no, I think it's great.
Yeah, still elementary.
I think it's great, I just, I know the teachers are the ones who ends up opening the locks for the first six weeks of school, and I want to be able to... The other question I had was, really two things, if you'll permit me. One, I think first and foremost, thank you. This is, this is great. Clearly, you guys have shown, you've done a lot of work. Thank you, although I know you've been working really closely with the building committee, as well as many as others. Thank you to everybody for coming and showing this. Couple questions. One, we're kind of in this position, because we built a school 30-plus years ago that we couldn't expand on to, trying to progress 30 years forward from a taxpayer perspective. I don't ever want, I want to do whatever we can to try and avoid that, and I'm not saying we need, we don't want to build the Taj Mahal, we want to build what we can, but are we leaving ourself space that if we needed to at some point add on to it, long, long, long after we're all off the committee? Then, is that possible?
It is possible to add on to the building.
Okay.
One of the ways that it could be done would be to add to the east, where we have open space, and the best place for that to happen, or the most likely place, would be to build over the gym, essentially. You could do, build beyond it if you want. And it's been, we have discussed this, and the MSBA has actually brought up the question as well, but, you know, there's been some debate about whether, you know, the school of this size, it's really looking like it's gonna be the largest elementary school in Massachusetts, and how much bigger do you want it to get before you could even, before you consider, you know, maybe housing them tomorrow?
Yeah, no.
Just, would you tell them what you did with the stairways, just in case you, if you're gonna put lots up and enlizing?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna size the stairways so that they're generous enough to accommodate additional loads, and actually, the MSBA, when you start out a project, they provide you with their standardized space program template. When you plug in the number of students, it gives you the number of spaces and their size, and it called for 43 classrooms, and we, the numbers worked out much better if it was 45, because you could divide it evenly between three grids. And we worked at making the floor plan more efficient, so that we didn't make the school any bigger to do that. So we actually have two more classrooms than what the MSBA plan calls for.
Excellent. The last question that I can think of right now. So Craig, you did a lot with busing at Woodland, and you did a great job with it, but I know it was a labor of love going through that. Just looking at the traffic patterns that have, and the loop that's kind of been built around this, I'm sure there has been, just can you kind of speak to what the drop-off process would look like, and what that, from a busing perspective, as well as the parent drop-off?
I think it's fair to say we're not there yet.
And that's fair, and that's, that's an easy answer, and that's fine, and I'm good with that.
We've had probably two or three meetings talking about it, but there's a traffic consultant that's been hired, so we're waiting for that input till we figure that out exactly.
Excellent. Thank you, and I know...
Believe me, it's something that we've talked about.
And I'm sure it's top of your mind, I'm thinking about the moms and the dads sitting at home that do drop-off, they're looking at a loop going, oh my god, there's another bus loop, so, thank you.
If I may, on the second floor, where you're, you're gonna have that open space looking down into the first floor area, I guess it is?
Yes.
What is the, what is the safety gonna be around that area? Only, the reason I ask that question is, Bob, the first day of school, of course, when we were at Stacy.
Yeah.
And we were walking up all the different stairs, we have areas where potentially there could be, you know, some serious injury, and so I love the idea of the open concept, but what is, you know, what is your idea for safety, you know, glass, I mean, a plexiglass wall, and if so, how high, and...
Well, there's a code minimum for any guard rail above a surface that's elevated from another, another surface, 42 inches. And we can, as we get into the detailed stage, we'll look at with the building committee, whether that's, you know, sufficient, whether we need to do anything additional to ensure the safety.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there plans to expand the parking lot? I would assume there is.
Yeah.
You would need to.
Yes, because we're bringing a third more students here.
Right.
The parking today, I think, works okay.
Mm-hmm.
It can be maxed out at times, so we're adding at least one-third more parking spaces, if not considerably more. It's balancing against how much paved surface we're adding to the site and the stormwater infrastructure that's associated with that.
Is that, I'm trying to conceptualize this on the space that it is now.
Mm-hmm.
So the entrance that you have pictured there, is that the same entrance?
That's correct.
So you're working from that same entrance, and pulling it both, like by forgetting it, and pulling it around that pond, which moved over a little bit?
Yes, we're continuing to look at our options for this, but today, we're looking, because it has a pretty good sightline condition on North Fine Street.
Okay, yeah.
And it exists.
Right.
Can we reuse it? We'll make it wider so that there's one inlet lane and two outlet lanes.
Perfect, yeah, okay.
And then the buses and cars will split from there.
Okay, and then the school extends, there's a small parking lot, kind of on the left there, and the school extends onto that park, that lot. When you're driving, there's a huge lot, and then there's kind of that little, maybe...
Those all are in this area here.
Okay, all right.
So the...
This is all the woods.
Yeah, so this is the point where you, there's woods all around the detention point now.
Yes, and that's what you're accessing.
And then the path down to the field is through here.
It's the larger space.
Right.
It seems to be. And what about the neighbors? There's neighbors quite close by, I mean, I know when you're in that parking lot, there's neighbors that abut there, as well as on the Cypress Road, not abutting it, but, you know, pretty darn close. So I'm not concerned about where the green is, but that's pretty close.
Yeah, there are, there are houses in, along Senate Road in this area, and all up and down Richmond, Redwood, sorry.
So you're not any closer, you're still within the site, or...
You know, in, for these houses, they'll, along here, they'll be, they'll have open space now, where there was a school before.
Okay.
These houses are gonna have a school where there was open space adjacent to them before, so it's kind of a trade that goes on.
Okay, yeah, that's exciting.
We'll try to keep, maintain or establish new planted buffers wherever we can.
And one more question, I'm sorry. Is that an access road that comes behind the school, or is it more of a walking path?
It's really for emergency services.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not intended for any vehicles to go on, other than emergency service vehicles, police and fire.
Police and fire wanted access.
Sure. Makes sense.
Except on parent-teacher, like, for, 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 for...
And I'm sorry, I also have a question. So when you knock the existing building down, and you're gonna convert it back into fields, into soccer fields, or just grass field, or...
I think it's open space that's not been determined yet, so...
Yeah, that's what it is.
To one, although, soccer fields?
Full-size.
Yeah.
The, the, there's a small, there's a ten and under field in proximity with the building.
Yeah.
Above all that, that's gonna be a larger soccer field.
Okay.
So that would be a legitimate size, but it'll be an adult size or for our old children.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, very nice.
It's put in a lot of work. We have, and there's a lot more work to do between now and when the building goes out to the contractors.
How long does it, once you said, you know, once we're ready to build, how long does something like this take to build?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. So the kids will be in school for most of it?
It'll affect essentially two school years.
Okay.
You know, where they won't have use of the field during that time.
Okay.
Thank you. It just seems really fast. Eighteen months is, it seems like a long time, but at the same time, to get that amount of work done is...
And this project seemed so far away, just a year or two ago, you know, and now we're sort of staring it down. Finally, yeah, I do, yeah. Been great.
We, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have a conversation, good to have a conversation with our town meeting partners soon.
Yes, thank you all, appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Look forward to hearing more, it's very exciting.
Thanks, Craig, thanks, Aldo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time, Mr. Chairman, right on time. Right on time. Is Rob here?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have the capital improvement plan review. We have Rob Quinn, our facilities manager here.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought I saw Rob.
He is.
Okay.
And just by way of introduction, we had talked about bringing this back before the committee quarterly, and so we're long overdue actually to bring the plan back, although not much has changed in terms of capital in the Woodland School project, as we've talked about before. Has been and continues to be our main capital project. And Rob put together the plan with us, and it summarizes a lot of work that's been done. We added to the plan, the work that he did this, over the last school year, has been added to that, updated, and I wanted to just give it to the committee. So Rob can certainly speak to, maybe just highlight some of the work, Rob, if you don't mind, and thanks for coming.
Hi, Rob, thanks for coming.
Hi, Rob. Hello. You're rather dapper there, Rob.
I was gonna say, look good in a tie.
He cleans up very well.
Your favorite part of your job, coming to us.
Yeah. As in the past, our goal's to maintain our building and upgrade it with local funds without the need to go to capital every year. I'd say we'll never go capital, there will be a time we'll probably have to. But our goal is to maintain our buildings without going to town meeting and asking for more money. And I think we've done that fairly well in the past, and will continue to. I'm sure you've all reviewed this, it's pretty extensive. What I'm gonna focus on is FY14. And as you go through this, you can see we are continuing with our phasing approach to lodge items, and what that means to the new members, new members, yeah? Joe's not here?
He's not here tonight.
You know, we fight off a piece every year, and it's gonna be a continuing cycle. Everybody can't get it all at once, but our goal is that everybody gets what they're looking for, and we continue to upgrade. And again, as you look through this, you see a big push right now is technology upgrades and security upgrades. We've conducted lockdown drills in all of our schools, and when I say a security upgrade, a security upgrade is as small as ensuring that every door in the building closes and locks properly. To, to a lodge you want, where we're actually building vestibules now at the entrances of the schools, in order to, much like the gentleman said earlier, we'll buzz an outsider into a space, check his credentials, his or her credentials, and then buzz them out into the, the school space. Technology and security, they sort of tie together. I know Dawn and Mike, you know, you guys have been hitting it hard on the, your little force there.
That's the best way I've had that word so far.
And, and I apologize, and I understand that you want to see it done, you know, things done a little quicker, but what I don't want to do is, I don't want to put something out there that's not gonna work. So my goal, and Bob's goal, was to create a security network, and we've started that. So what that means to you and to us is, all the security equipment that operates at the high school will no longer travel on the same network as the administration or as the students. So it's not gonna slow anybody down, we can get the highest quality stuff that works the fastest, and we can implement all our IP cameras without worrying about the network crashing, which is a concern right now. That network is now in place with its own network switches, and servers, and so forth, and as you, again, as you look through this, you can see, the, again, mentioned over and over at each school is an access control system. What an access control system is, is a system that would be in place with swipe card entry into the buildings for staff members, all programmable, all trackable, and again, all state-of-the-art. This will travel across our security network. I mean, I don't want to go through every single one of these, if you guys have questions, obviously, ask. The other big piece, and I wish Joe was here, because he came to my office a few weeks ago, I'm sure like all of you, he's concerned with the water usage with the rate hikes that we're gonna be facing from the water, I don't know, have they already kicked in? I don't know.
Yes.
All right, so, excuse me?
I got a one.
Did you? The, I'm piloting a program here at the high school, where we're gonna replace the flush ometers on the urinals down here in the lobby of the cafeteria. Low flow, again, a pilot, because we're not positive that the plumbing that was put in in 1970 can handle the low flow. So we're gonna put in three automatic flushometers. You've seen, I'm sure, when you've been out, they're battery operated, the battery's good for five years. The, you know, whoever uses the urinal walks away, it automatically flushes half as much water as the traditional flushometer, and no parts need to be replaced. My goal is to try that for a month, and see how, see how we're doing, see if, what the feedback is from the staff and from the students. And my fear is if we can't operate the urinals the way we expect them to operate, say they don't, you know, clear the urine, then we're gonna have to readjust. But what we have done on the water-saving front is, all the showers that actually get used in the high school at this time, which is the pool locker rooms and the athletic locker rooms, have all been upgraded to low-flow showerheads, the best ones that we can get. Again, it's just another one of our ways of piloting a program to, you know, help save the district some money. So what I'd like to do then is, you know, I'll just open up to you guys, and you can ask me questions, and we can, you know, get through this.
Donnie?
Mine's more of a comment, and really, I can't thank you enough, Rob, for all the work you do, and I just hope the town realizes the effort that you put in, the savings that you drive for the town and the district is tremendous, so...
I appreciate that.
Things like in the last year, doing that double trip thing on the alarm system.
Right.
Saving our principals from having to go back and forth to the school, you know, that alone was tremendous. But doing other things, like I know right now you're working on, you know, from those drills the other week, it wasn't just the doors, it, there's classrooms missing microphones, and people not being able to hear, you know, what's going on, and all these different things. You know, I take my hat off to you, and honestly, I really can't thank you enough. Everything we've ever asked you to do, you do it in a timely manner, a professional manner. I've never heard a negative thing about you. I just, I really applaud you for your work, I really do.
I just, to add upon that, I mean, it's timely that you're coming in right after we got the Woodland Building Project. A big piece of, that the MSBA has told us, of why we were able to move up to the top of the list and be eligible to even consider this project, is because of the way that we've maintained, and by we, I mean you, have maintained the schools and the existing buildings. And let me, I mean, I think there's not many members of these, of this committee that didn't go to most, almost all of those schools, or if not all of them. Some of them, it's, you know, it's, it's on a thread and a prayer at times, and I know that, you know, you don't complain, you don't come in and say, listen, I need more, I need more money, I need more money. You ask for what you need, and you, and you do a great job of finding, not only staying within budget, but finding ways to even take the budget that it sometimes is challenging to find ways to save even from there. So again, I think you do, you do, you're such a phenomenal asset, so thank you, and keep doing what you're doing.
Rob, I don't, last year, I don't think it was when you were here, but I think Kathy brought to our attention, you really had a need for some more space for storage, whether it was for vehicles or for equipment, and at the time... At the time, I had suggested and hoped that maybe we were gonna be able to build something into the Woodland School, which didn't end up panning out. Have you had any luck, um, finding space, or are you still struggling with that?
We are struggling, um, and Bob was in the meeting this, this afternoon with the, uh, you know, on the Woodland job, and they're actually trying to, the MSBA doesn't fund, they have a, a small amount of storage that they'll fund, so they're even trying to pull storage out of that building.
Right.
Correct, yeah, so, um, it's gonna be a struggle, right now, we have the, uh, the, my biggest concern is the, the plow truck, which, which has a sander on it.
Yeah.
Which you all know, you can't let get wet, you just have a block of ice, you can't sand, so, uh, right now, Chief Twoey's allowed us to put the, the truck in the winter months in at Hose Four, it's at, I believe that's Purchase Street, way down the end, the old, the Creppin building. I don't know how much longer that building's gonna be standing, hon- honestly, but I tweeted building checks, um, probably monthly to make sure that, you know, it's still standing. So, uh, going forward, it's gonna, that's the truth.
Well, there's one thing, one thing we'll say about you, you've never been short on telling us the truth. Love that.
But going forward, yes.
A garage, a garage for the, the plow.
Have we talked to Scott, Christopher Foley? You know, if, if you go down there during the winter months, it's, it's packed, and there's a lot of cars down there too now, you know, so, uh, he's pretty maxed out.
Have we looked at exploring, um, either, I mean, listen, this is Milford, there's not a shortage of garages that are around, we've got more landscape and construction companies than I think any other town in the area does. Have we explored the option of either looking for some space that, either somebody's willing to donate or lease to us at a very, at a reasonable cost?
I will tell you that prior to, uh, Chief Twoey allowing us to use Hose Four, we, I started to review that a little bit, looking for a space that would rent to us maybe for, uh, you know, a four-month period. John stepped right up and helped us out, so I didn't have to do that, but, you know, I don't know, Kathy may be able to answer this, um, I don't know if they have a plan on expanding more of the, uh, you know, the school buses, bed buses, the small little, and at some point, I mean, you know, we may well even wanna think about getting those inside, um, we've been lucky enough to have many real vandalism, I think we had, we put locking gas caps on all the vehicles, 'cause somebody, you know, sited some gas for a time, but other than that, we've been doing okay, but, again, there's gonna come a point when Hose Four is not available, and we're gonna have to, uh, find someplace to house it, either to rental, or if we, if we tried to build on our property.
We, you know, I, I, I think it's something that we wanna keep our eye on, and, you know, to work with you to come up with a solution, 'cause again, a big part of being successful and taking care of our facilities is being able to take care of, um, the tools and the equipment that we have to do that. So I think that's something we wanna try to probably keep on our radar, so if you can keep us, you know, informed about that, I think that would be good.
All right, what I'll do at a minimum is I will, uh, I, you know, I got, got some numbers, I wanna say, three or four years ago, I'll get current numbers on a, a steel building, you know, at least we'll have a ballpark as to where to start.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you, Rob.
All right, guys, thanks, Rob.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming in.
Rob, thanks, I know it's been a long day for you as well, with all the meetings, thanks.
Donnie and I both thank you.
They're task force, thank you.
They're force, they're force. They're a little force.
Next up, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Kathy? Do you have some things for us, I imagine?
I do. I have eight, um, payable warrants this evening for your approval, the first one is sixty-two thousand, five hundred, ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion from Dawn, second from Scott, all in favor, unanimous in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of one hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and twelve cents.
Motion from Mike, second from Christine, all in favor, unanimous in favor?
I'm sorry, the third warrant is in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Motion from Christine, second from Scott, all in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion from Mike, second from Dawn, all in favor?
The fifth warrant is in the amount of three hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Christine, all in favor?
The sixth warrant is in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and four cents.
Motion from Christine, second from Mike, all in favor?
The seventh warrant is in the amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Motion from Dawn, second from Scott, all in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Mike, all in favor, unanimous in favor?
The committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting, no vote is required. We do have a course reimbursement request in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion from Mike, second from Dawn, all in favor, unanimous in favor?
And finally, this evening, Mr. Chair, we have gifts.
I have that right here. We have a gift from the Wayside Youth and Family, um, for the Chris Heron Project, for the purpose of substance abuse training, in the amount of one thousand dollars, very generous. Motion from Christine, second from Mike, all in favor, unanimous in favor, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment, Kevin?
Greg, good evening.
Welcome.
I'm gonna bring the Bob Barker microphone over, so don't feel old.
All, all yours. Come on down.
That's right. I have no, I have no lack of action.
There's no filibustering.
That's right, that's right. All right, so I, I have, I have three things for you this evening, um, the, the first is, um, Dawn had asked a question about, um, the drug, alcohol, kind of substance abuse curriculum in our health, um, programs, just based on the Chris, as a follow-up to the Chris Heron presentation, and I wanna thank Nancy Half, Shannon Ryan, and Alyssa Brudner, for, Alicia Brudner, for putting these together for me, they're some of our health teachers in the district, and they're curriculum team leaders. I just wanna go kinda grade level to grade level, to give you a sense, and this is only gonna take about two minutes, just to give you a sense of kind of the level of programming, 'cause, uh, Mr. Heron made a comment that you kinda have a one-shot deal in the high school, and, um, I'm really happy to report that the Milford Public Schools offers a very comprehensive program, from fifth grade all the way through, um, through high school. So, at, at grade five, there's basically eight classes, and the focus there is more on tobacco and smoking, is, is kind of age-appropriate. In grade six, there's fifteen classes, and this, um, expands to drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. In grade seven, there are sixteen classes, and it focuses on alcohol, tobacco, and other substances, uh, they get into prescription drugs, um, and some of the effects of, um, of drug use, and maybe drug use in the, with, with families. Grade eight, there are twenty classes, and they discuss things like gateway drugs, warning signs of addiction, coping with a loved one's addiction, um, and they discuss several, um, several of the drugs that are kind of, you know, the more common drugs that we see, um, you know, locally in the state and nationally. At the high school level, there is, um, fourteen classes as part of, um, the health curriculum, as well as an entire elective called Drugs and Alcohol in Society, which, um, is a full course. So there's a lot more than that kind of one-shot deal, it's kind of a fifth through twelve comprehensive approach, and I know there's a great partnership with, um, the local police and other community agencies, and they frequently come in to do presentations, um, and, and to kind of discuss resources that are available as well.
And these are one-day classes that you're referring to?
Well, they're, they're fourteen classes as part of the health curriculum, so, there's a unit within a course, uh, and drugs and alcohol or smoking, or maybe two mini-units over the course of half a year or a year. And it's, it's a little different at each grade level, but I wanted to give you a sense that it's not just, you know, one day a year, one day, you know, at another grade level, and I, you know, again, I wanna thank the health teachers for really pulling this really detailed information together for me, and I have this available, if anybody's interested, the notes that I got from the, from the health teachers. The, the second, the second update is just, I wanted to give, Mike had asked a question about specific strategies last week when I was, um, burying you guys in data. And, um... And what I wanna do is give you a couple examples, uh, from each of the schools, about some of the things that they actually do, this isn't a comprehensive list, but at least it gives you a sense of some of the strategies that are happening at each of the different schools, um, that are kind of ongoing initiatives tied to either MCAS performance, or, or other indicators that they've said, hey, we've, we see a need, we wanna provide some programming, or, um, an intervention, if that makes sense. So, at, um, at, at the Brookside School, they focus on the use of assessments such as running records, the DRA, the G-Mate in the grade, to measure student learning and growth, and, um, and intervene or adjust programs based on the results of those assessments, so, if, um, you know, students are having a hard time with addition in a group of students, they'll put an intervention in place. If students are having a hard time identifying a noun in a sentence, there's an intervention that, that goes immediately in place, and, and I'll say that I've been in classrooms, I'm at a couple of the elementary schools, as part of, um, the walkthrough program that Bob spoke about, um, with his goal, and it's great to see that in action. Uh, we were in an elementary classroom, actually Memorial, although I'm focusing on Brookside right now, where a teacher had six different groups going at the same time, they're all basically working on the same concept, but each student was working kind of almost at a different, each group of students was working at a different level based on their particular needs, and you saw, if you were walking around, kind of the differences of what was happening, but the students had no idea, and they thought they were all kind of working on the same project, when all their kind of individual needs were being met, and it was really great to see. And it was, um, you know, we had a nice discussion with the principal afterwards, which is really a great, kind of a great, um, impact of these, these programs, because then we started to say, hey, that worked really well here, could be replicated, or, you know, why did they do this particular practice here? And you just, you just start having those great discussions about curriculum and instruction, and I, and I think that's gonna continue throughout the entire year. They also use programs like Reading A to Z, Raz Kids, Lexia, to provide a kind of focused instruction to struggling learners, so, through some of those assessments, um, a need is identified, they're able to provide that, that, uh, these programs that are, that are ready-made and in place, that you can kind of connect the need to the student. Okay? Memorial, um, this is actually where I saw the, the classroom, um, yesterday, was focusing on differentiated instruction, there's a big focus there, and I would say, I was probably in fourteen or fifteen classrooms, and I'd say eight or nine classrooms, there was clear evidence of differentiated instruction going on, and, and they had no idea kind of when we were coming or where we were coming, so they weren't preparing it for us, but it was just great, great practice going on, so that's, that's really, that's really good to see. The use of focused objectives and clear measurements of those objectives, which, um, helps to focus the teacher's practice, and it sets clear expectations for the learners in the classroom, so if you know, if you know what you're supposed to learn, the teacher knows what they're, you know, they're supposed to teach, it gets you there, 'cause you have a clear goal, and I think we're, we're, we're seeing more and more of that, as just regular practice i- in, in schools. It doesn't sound like a big deal, but it, but it, but it really, but it really is, because you're breaking down kind of these, these, um, these broad kind of standards into very specific learning objectives, that the students can understand what they're expected to do, the teacher clearly presents it, and they, they try to get each student there, and if they don't get the students there, they're making adjustments. Uh, Woodland, um, School has, um, has implemented Common Planning Time to review assessments and discuss student progress, which, which is, which is huge, um, they're spending a lot of time just talking about the results of all of these assessments, common assessments, broader assessments, and really trying to adjust curriculum, adjust instruction, to, um, to ensure that all the students kind of learn.
Can I ask, I mean, do we have it in teams?
They are.
Or i- in the teams that they're already set up with?
Correct, correct, we're also looking at trying to get some time for content-based discussions as well.
Okay.
And that's something, um, that's something Craig and I have already talked about.
Right, right.
Um, they also have an after-school homework haven program to help students with homework, um, which, which is just a great program, 'cause it really, um, you know, the math is a great example, there's a lot of students that, the math teacher's right in front of, front of you, they get it, the math teacher walks away, gone. So this is an opportunity to put teachers with the students to really work through the concepts they're struggling with.
What's utilization of that by students?
I, I, I can, I can find that out for you, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but I could definitely find.
And that's fair, that's fine, I didn't expect you to have a, I would...
Thirty-two students.
Yeah, I would, no, I wasn't expecting you to have that answer, but I'd be interested to see what the utilization is of that.
I know there's similar programs at other schools too, so I can maybe get a sense of...
Just, I mean, I would, I would think, 'cause the challenge obviously is always, you know, how do we make it more accessible to students?
Correct.
Of, how are they getting home, I mean, they're, they're little kids, they're not driving, they're, they most likely, they probably don't have a s- have a sibling that's driving them, or a friend that's driving them home yet, so...
Right.
Uh, at least I hope we don't have any friends driving to Brookside. So I'd be interested to see what the participation looks like.
I can look into that for you.
But is that an invitation, or the, the teacher solicits the parent and says, your child should stay after school, is that that home?
I, I, yeah, I, I believe, I believe so, but I can find out the specific mechanics of it too.
Yeah, I think that's more of that kind of...
I think it's an invitation program, I think you're right, I think it is an invitation program.
Stacy's is a little different, but you still have to sign up for it.
Correct, correct, but again, it's another resource for students that helps them be successful. The middle schools, I'm gonna put Stacy and East together, um, there's a focus on comprehensive literacy approaches, uh, things like world, word walls, interactive read-alouds, uh, writing across content areas, which is a big push for the Common Core as well. Um, accountable, independent reading, there's, there's a number of teams that, um, require students to read a novel, as, in addition to the, the other work that they're doing. Small group instruction to support struggling readers, journaling, um, again, in the classroom with Stacy, I observed an English teacher, uh, doing a great job, um, just teaching students how to kind of attack a text. A lot of times, you know, students are just kind of reading for pleasure, and they're not really looking to pull out main ideas, key points, um, she really talked, she did a great job of kind of explaining how to make an inference, um, what's, what's the author saying, but kind of what's the author really saying? Um, and try to draw inferences from what you're reading, which is, which is a critical skill, um, and she had a whole process for these students to kind of go through it, and it was one of the best lessons related to kind of, um, learning how to draw inferences from what you're reading that I've ever seen. So that was, that was fantastic. There's, there's also a focus on formative assessment through the use of exit slips, and they really do a, a nice job of just data-driven instruction at both Stacy and East, uh, just, just across the board. Uh, the Milford High School, um, they're really pushing, uh, the, the development and analysis of common assessments across content areas, and again, this is to highlight the strengths and weaknesses of the students, and also the curriculum. If you're looking at, and they're, they're able to look, the great thing about the high school is there's multiple tasks that are, that are national, that we, or at the state level, you have the MCAS, you have the AP tests, you have PSATs, you have SATs, you're able to draw from a lot of different data sources that are national, and they're also comparing that to the, um, the assessments they're doing locally. And you're gonna be able to pretty quickly determine, you know, where some of those gaps are, based on, not only MCAS, but PSATs and SMTs. So I wanted to kind of give you a sense of some of the practices that were happening across schools, um, there, there's a lot of good work going on to kind of address the needs of struggling learners, but also push those learners that, um, that, you know, need that enrichment or extension. All right?
Just by two seconds, that after-school help is so underutilized by students, i- it's unbelievable what, what a difference that can make in students, but because you don't have late bus, because we don't have those opportunities for students that we had growing up, I mean, I remember in middle school in Milford, there was a late bus, I know we've talked about it before, but, uh, that after-school time for a kid to be able to go is un- unbelievable, it's really valuable, I don't know how we give access to students more, because I think immediately kids think, because there's so many working families, well, I can't go, I can't get home, and that one, that time aft- it, it makes a huge difference, it's unbelievable, I've seen it in my own kids, that now they're accessing it, it's unbelievable.
And, and there's, there's...
I just don't know how to fix it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a, that's a big struggle.
You know, I, I, I don't know how to fix it in today's day and age, but it's, there's gotta be other ways for kids to get that, and all kids, not just the strugglers or the, you know, it's just...
That's what I, I would like to get the data on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see, I'll, I'll...
What it looks like, and then we can maybe start to tackle the problem of, let's see how many are using it right now versus what really could be using it?
Yeah.
I'll get that information from the principals and, you know, get their thoughts on, you know, who's using it, and what their ideas are to maybe potentially expand the program.
Yeah.
Who was in using it because there's no
Correct.
Transportation provided. So if we provided transportation, who would use it?
What would that mean? Yeah.
And, and maybe from a teacher perspective of what's need versus actual use.
Right, because I know there's concern about becoming a babysitting situation and stuff like that, but I don't know.
You know, in the past, there've been.
The difference it makes.
There've been some extended learning time grants that have been out in the past.
Yes, uh-huh.
Uh, with some matching funding requirements from the, from the, you know, from the schools. I can explore that. We can sort the costs this out for FY fifteen. If not, get something in place maybe even sooner.
Yes, that middle school level, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Middle, elementary, any of those.
Well, elementary too.
Yeah, it's just.
You know, and, and as we look at negotiating down the road with a teacher's contract, maybe even thinking about a flexible schedule of concepts where, you know, you have teachers who might stagger their day, may start later and stay later. So the, the, the school day really is, any teacher's working X number of hours by contract, but they may start later and end later.
Sure.
And then therefore give more opportunities to kids with being in front of certified teachers. We can start to think outside of the box like that down the road.
That just, yeah.
No, it's just.
Two cents I have to put in.
No.
Kevin, can I just jump in real quick on one, one comment I wanted to make about the, the, we started this past week with our learning walks, the administrative walks.
Right.
What a fantastic, uh, opportunity for, for Kevin, me, Meg and Jen with the principals, assistant principals to walk. I mean, we, how many classrooms have we been in this week? It's gotta be thirty, forty classes.
I would say it's more than that.
And it, you know, in some cases it's a, it's a quick pass, some cases it's a ten-minute sit-down of the observation. And, uh, and it's all been focused on student engagement. And I, I know I, I talked about this with the goal setting last time. But what's really, uh, it's just great to reflect on that as a matter of practice. When we came back, so we, we had it, we, we had our calibration. We would meet, uh, with the principal, with, you know, with, with all of us from the central office and say, here's the standard that we're looking for, the proficient exemplor is really the mark we're looking to see from teachers. And make sure we're all calibrated, we're all looking for the same things. And then we will break off, the principal and I this week. Uh, and then Kevin might go with an assistant principal or by himself. Meg will observe her programs. Jen Lancaster, same thing with the ELL programs. Uh, and we spent an hour on the floor, so to speak. Uh, we come back then and spend an hour after that debriefing with the principal, everybody talking about their vantage point from their department, all around the focus of student engagement. And boy, we left with some great takeaways. It's, it's just been great to connect with the principals, get us in front of kids, in front of staff. And we do a lot of problem solving, as you can imagine, right in the school while we're there. And give principals time in that meeting to, uh, talk about other issues they might be having, like maybe security access to the building or parking issues or other staff issues that have come up. And I think it's worked out, uh, you know, your perspective on it as well, but.
Yeah, no, I, I would. I would second that because I think it's building relationships and capacity, which I think both are fantastic things.
So we've seen a lot of what Kevin's talking about firsthand. It's, it's really been dynamic.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
Not, not to, uh, blow, you know, lengthen your presentation, I apologize.
I do that on my own.
Are, are the principals able to, um, leverage some of the teacher assessments that they need to do w- while they're, um,
There.
making these te- again, because I knew that took a, what we heard was it took a tremendous amount of time for them to get a lot of that done.
Right. So like the case where Memorial School, I, Lisa and I did, uh, simultaneously four, four walkthrough observations in the time that we were there in that one hour fifteen minutes apiece. And then you can give immediate feedback to the staff. So it, there, it's really, um, multi-fold purpose about visits.
Right, yeah. No, that's great, yeah.
So what I want to share with you, uh, the, the third piece, um, and the colors look so much better on my screen than they do up on the wall. Is, is talk about, um, district determining measures, which is an aspect of the educator evaluation system. And I want to kind of walk you through that process because it's going to be a word, it's going to be out in the media. It's going to be something that's going to be discussed within Milford Public Schools. And it's a process that's taking place statewide. And it's, um, it's, it's connected to the ed evaluation system. It's kind of the next phase of it. So, these are, these are, these are pulled directly from the DESE presentations. I've really tried to compact it as much as possible. So each educator has to have, um, two measures connected to them. So eventually every school district in the state will have a list of every teacher and every, every licensed, um, every licensed employee that's licensed by the Department of Education. And they have to have at least two measures connected to them. If they teach in an area that has, um, MCAS or eventually PARK, they need to use those assessments. If they're not connected to MCAS or PARK, we either need to use an assessment, a commercial assessment, a local assessment, or an adapted assessment between local and commercial, if that makes sense. So, for educators whose primary role is not a classroom teacher, the appropriate measures for the education, educator's contribution to student learning, growth and achievement is set by the district. And this gets tricky when you talk about nurses, school psychologists, um, even within the academic, um, realm, our teachers.
Gym teachers?
PE teachers, actually, there's, there's more assessments out there. That was my initial P, you know, reaction too, but there's more assessments out there and we're actually, we're actually pile, one of the pilots we're doing is through our own elementary PE program. But there's, 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 there's a lot of, there's a lot of kind of groups that there's, it's going to be challenging to, to kind of accurately assess their impact on student learning. And that's, that's one of our challenges this year is to try to identify some of those things. So we need to, you need to get at least two measures. And we're looking at, um, two things, trends and patterns. So trends means you're looking at it over time. You don't want to judge someone in just one year because if they have that brilliant group, they're going to look great. If they have a group that's struggling, they may not look so great. So you want to look at it over time. The other thing you want to look at is, um, patterns, so multiple measures. So not only do we have to identify two, um, two of these district determined measures, but we also have to identify what's high, moderate and, um, low impact. So high impact would be significantly more than one year's growth, um, collectively for the students that they're working with. Moderate is approximately one year's growth and low is, um, significantly less than one year's growth. And you have to do that for each measure. So for the MCAS and the PARK, it's pretty clearly identified because the state sets that. For a number of assessments that we use right now, like the grade and the G made that I mentioned earlier, there's pretty clear, like, grade level equivalencies and there, there's growth connected to that that are metrics that are developed through the, um, administration process. But if you're do- using local measures or you're looking at like portfolios, um, it gets a little tricky. It gets a little tricky. Uh, two key questions we need to ask, is that, is the measure aligned to content? And do the results inform educators about curriculum, instruction and practice? And we're really looking, does it provide valuable information about their students? Helping them to identify whether students are making the desired progress? Um, are they falling short or are they excelling? Does it provide valuable information to schools and districts about their educators? And this is kind of referred to content validity in the assessment literature. Again, five key questions when identifying, um, a DDM or district determined measure is how effectively does the assessment measure growth? You're not going to be able to measure growth all the time. Those were the SGP, um, numbers I was looking at last week. That was kind of doing those apples-to-apples comparisons. Some, some content areas, you're going to be forced just to look at achievement because you don't have a growth measure. Um, the, the, the message we're getting from the Department of Education is this is going to be an ongoing process. And we're not going to have perfectly identified district determined measures for every educator in every subject area at every grade level. But we're going to do the best that we can and, and work the process moving forward. Is there a common administration pro- protocol? Is there a common scoring process? Do the results correspond to that low, moderate or high growth and impact? And are the district determined measures comparable across schools, grades and subject matter district-wide? Um, how do you measure growth? Pre and post-test, there's a repeated measure design, holistic evaluation. In, in a post-test only that would do year-over-year growth. So there's a, there's a possibility that we might take end of the year, fourth grade, grade results or G made results and compare them to third grade. So, it's things like that. The, like, what we're trying to do is, um, not reinvent the wheel with this process, but it uses many, um, assessments that we already use currently. That kind of fit into the DDM mold, rather than create assessments that's creating more work for our teachers and taking students away from kind of the teaching and learning that we really want to focus on.
So, these assessments are used for evaluating teachers?
Correct.
So when.
And, 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 and in terms of students.
So how does, how does it fit with the big tool? That, that the principals and we bargained in that, and it's so mandated, like, I'm trying to figure out what is this compared to what we're doing?
So it's, 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 it's part of, it's part of the. It's part of that process.
It, it's.
It's part of that process, but it's.
It kind of makes it more objective, that process.
Co- correct. And it's, it's kind of, it's, this is the second phase of that process. And I'll, I'll go through the timeline in a couple of slides.
So from that process, there's another phase?
Correct. So there's the, there's the rubrics that you, you probably saw last year and that we're using.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, this is, this is kind of the second phase of that process where, um, on top of getting your, um, rating of kind of exemplary proficient, um, you're also going to get, um, your impact on student learning. And that would be the high, moderate or low.
And this is done by the principal?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So it's adding some. I, if I want, I want to make sure I've got my arms wrapped around this. It's essentially adding some numbers to some of the behaviors that we're seeing.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct. It's, it's, yeah. I, I think that's a good way, good way to put it, but it's only an aspect of the whole evaluation.
Yeah, it's not the whole thing. It's not tell, the numbers don't tell the whole story. It's, here's what we're seeing.
Yeah, so.
Here's the numbers that supply it and either backs it up or it doesn't. But it's, it's part of the story.
Yep. And so it's different states have put a different weight on like the state testing system measures or local ESS measures. Massachusetts has decided to put less weight on that than some other states. And they're, they're giving, um, I think districts a little more flexibility in how to implement it, which I think is a good thing.
But it.
Because, you know, like, frequently think about those nurses or the school psychologists. They're trying to be a little more thoughtful about the process and not try to bang everybody into like a, the same round hole.
But it, it's a way of tying in student actual growth measures into a teacher's evaluation.
Correct. Correct.
In a way that is helpful without, you know, that's really what it comes down to.
Absolutely. And that's why the data piece is so important this year because we really want to build the capacity of our educators to really be able to, and a lot of them are doing it already.
Mm-hmm.
But looking at the student data, looking at the growth, looking at the strengths and weaknesses, because the real value of those conversations are, you know, whether you have high growth, moderate growth or low growth is, you know, what are you doing?
Right.
Kind of to your question last week, what are you doing to impact what you're seeing in the numbers?
Well, it's almost a, it, it's a two-part thing. One section is your job performance.
Right.
And the second section of it is, you know, how are your children learning?
Correct, correct.
Does your job performance work?
Correct.
With more than one group of students?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, you're getting an efficiency rating, but wait a minute, you, you know, your, your numbers of the education of the children are kind of low. How can that?
And, and I was in. I was at a, I was at a meeting, kind of a statewide meeting this week, and they were talking about the ratings in a particular district and how a high percentage of the educators were, um, you know, exemplary and proficient, but they're, and it was a district that was struggling with the MCAS. And their scores weren't matching up. And their question was, you know, you know, is this really, is this really working for us?
It's the, it's the point of frustration that we see sometimes with kids and I've, we've heard it from parents for years. Wait a second, how's my straight A student that needs improvement?
And it's, yeah, it's, 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 it's another cal- calibration tool.
Yep. So I think that's good.
It's just another way to look at. And that's why you want to look at, you know, state level data and probably a couple of local assessments too, because you want to look at, are we using the right local assessments?
Yep.
What are we doing with those local assessments? How's that feeding into what we're doing with the Common Core curriculum and the, um, you know, the MCAS and, and sort of PARK stuffs?
It's, the proof is in the pudding if your kids are performing and growing, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's what it, if it works, your kids are growing.
And it, and it goes back to using those targets in classrooms.
Right.
If you have a clear objective or a goal, and your goal is to like increase your growth by five percent, which is a realistic goal, you know, you're doing things, your practice, in your practice to kind of get to that goal. If you're just saying, I think they're learning, um, you're never going to know if they are or they aren't. And that's why the data is, is important and valuable.
Thanks.
Good.
So here's the, here's the timeline. Um, this year, uh, we're identifying pilot EDMs. And we're also developing our, our district determined measures for next year as well. Um, that we're, we're, we're going to try to roll out. In two thousand fourteen and fifteen, which is next year, we're implementing this process fully. That's, that's, that's the goal. Uh, two thousand fifteen and sixteen, districts collect the second year of trend data and issue student impact ratings for all educators. So again, you want more than one year of data to be, to be fair. I had a conversation with one of the, um, one of the folks that works with the Edwin system, the data warehouse system at the state level, um, a couple of days ago. And he, in, in November, they're going to roll out a program where teachers, and it's not going to be fully implemented this year, but teachers will have access to their own data and their own students that are connected to, um, the different management systems. So they can go in and view those reports for their own, for their own classroom. Um, I think it's going to be a couple of years before everybody in the state's going to have access to it. But one of the things I asked him is can we put at least five years of data in there so teachers can really look at their trends? Because they're going to only put three years in. And the people around the table kind of all shook their heads. So I think that's, I, that's going to be real within a year or two. And in November, there's going to be a number of districts piloting teacher access to their own MCAS data. And they're going to start to look at ways to maybe even put local assessments into it so you can compare. Unless you, unless you. MCAS, local assessments, SATs, AP classes, and even right now, um, all the students' grades are uploaded into the system as well. So you can almost get a baseball card with the students, and I forget how many years back it goes. But basically, they're, they're pre-kindergarten, kindergarten work in, in grades and assessments all the way through the time they graduate. And if we can put local assessments in there too, it kind of gives you a full picture. And if you can start to manipulate that data, there's a lot of great things you can, you can do with it. So. So our, um, proposed pilots, and we submitted this to the Department of Education a couple of weeks ago. Um, for early grade literacy, we're using the grade, which is, um, what we're already using in the system right now. So it just made sense. For early grade math, we're using the G made, which is the, um, the same, that's commercially developed assessment, but for mathematics. For middle grade, uh, math, we're using our everyday math common assessment. For high school writing to text, we're doing AP, um, history, and we're using the AP rubrics. And this, these are, these, everyone has already been vetted through, there's a whole process at the state level. Every one of these programs has been vetted except for the everyday math common assessments. And I just got the thumbs up email from the DESE, was it this morning or yesterday? Within the last couple of days anyways, that they, they approved our pilots.
One question for you, Kevin, on the, just very, very briefly, just, and I'm now looking for an answer now. I'd ask you to just go back and take a look. There was some concern, this was going back a little bit with everyday math, when it was, that it's designed for a certain length period of time that it takes to teach it. Our periods don't align to that. And in fact, the, to the point where the person that was kind of teaching it, teaching it to our teachers said, well, if you don't have the right amount of time to do it, this isn't going to work. Um, in fact, we had, I think last year, we had some consultants that came in and said they were seeing different components of everyday math and what was working and what wasn't. I'd be interested to kind of s- get an update of kind of where we are with this.
Yep, I can, I can definitely do that.
Is it, is there something we need to do? Is the program work? Does everyday math work in the structure that we have? Is there anything that needs to be adjusted? Just what does that kind of look and feel like?
And we're actually spending time on the twenty-eighth, um, departmentally, just looking at curriculum. I had an opportunity to kind of, um, at last month's curriculum team leader meeting to get everybody to do an assessment of where they were with their curriculum maps in terms of Common Core alignment. And we're going to kind of take that to the next step by having, uh, K through twelve curriculum teams kind of meet and talk about vertical alignment, horizontal alignment, those types of issues with textbooks, materials, time.
Yep.
We've made a big shift at the high school, um, in terms of, uh, you know, ti- time in class. And that's going to, that's going to impact, uh, you know, instruction, delivery.
Mm-hmm.
Those types of things, pacing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I think maybe, maybe the first meeting in November.
It's fine.
Probably makes the most sense to do that, do that update because then I'll have that October twenty-eighth meeting, a little time to digest it and I'll be able to do a little presentation on it.
Great.
So, during this year, our, one, one of our big tasks as a curriculum team is to identify DDMs that are connected to each teacher. Um, a couple of folks almost fainted. Um, Jose Pinto in the high school had like twenty-five or twenty-six different courses going on. And we figured out that you just have to, um, connect two district determined measures to each teacher, not for each course.
I can imagine why he would have felt most tainted.
There's a few areas like that where there's just tons of courses within a particular
Right.
discipline. And really, the goal is to keep this manageable. And I think it reasonable, you're connecting two measures. And some folks will have more, maybe like three or four, but to keep it manageable, it's to the teacher, not to the course. So if you're teaching five different courses, you don't have twenty-five different district determined measures that you're being measured on. And another one of our goals is you're, you're, you're not going to be measured in the area, like, say you're at the high school and you're teaching four classes of algebra and you know, like, a, a geometry class. We're probably going to measure you in algebra because that's where you're doing the bulk of your teaching. It's probably not the best example, but the goal is really to try to, where your focus area is, is where we're going to try to measure your progress. Not that they're not measuring progress in the other classes, but it, the goal is to try to kind of measure where, where the bulk of your teaching responsibility or academic time is. So by June two thousand fourteen, we need to send the Department of Education a final plan for determining impact ratings um, based on the DDMs as well as the identified DDMs that we're going to use for the next school year. Two thousand fourteen fifty. And we have a team of teachers, administrators. Two thousand fourteen fifty. And we have a team of teachers, administrators, myself, Bob, um, that are working together to try to kind of work through these issues and talk through them. And in some places, we're going to be very easily identifiable, and we're going to be able to pick that low hanging fruit. In other areas, it's going to be a little more complex to try to figure out an effective district determined measures. I think our our approach is to try to be flexible and to try to um not really, unless we're making a positive change, not put an assessment in for the sake of doing an assessment.
You mentioned the core teams, and just to kind of talk through that, I know that um you know, a big piece that was put in last year, and I think, you know, really the favor of the committee was to make sure that um, you know, the idea of the curriculum team leaders and the meeting and working with each other across schools and across district um was kind of be able to maintain with that. Is that the core group you're talking about?
Absolutely. So for for the October twenty-eighth meeting, um
Good.
For the September meeting, just to give the committee a heads up, and I can't remember if I talked about that at all, I kind of just presented for a good chunk of the day on some of the key initiatives in the district. Um, we had one of our um English teachers at the high school, Amy Cunningham, do a presentation on Park um to try to give them a sense of the writing requirements that are happening, kind of three through eleven. And um we had an opportunity for folks to just do a little work with their curriculum maps and start to identify some potential district determined measures as well.
Good. I I'm I'm always an advocate of, listen, if we're it's a, it is a common practice in education as well as in in our department that sometimes gets away with this of the decisions get made in an ivory tower without actually asking the people on the ground that actually have to do it. So I'm I'm glad to see that's not what's happening here. Um, and I know that was something that was adjusted last year through Bob's efforts, and I'm glad to see you're continuing it.
Yeah, and and it would be foolhardy.
Because I think the teachers are, there's, they've got so much great knowledge to be able to put a part on that stuff.
Absolutely.
It happens in business every day.
Yeah, I know. That's why I said the ivory tower decision-making doesn't help, so it's great that that's, you're you're getting, you're getting with the folks that actually have to go and do it at the end of the day.
This, this is a team approach.
That's great.
We're trying to be, we're trying to look at this again thoughtfully and and look at what's going to give us the best information and what's going to be the fairest kind of assessment as well.
Great.
So the goal of this program is really um to get higher quality te- student data across content areas, across grade levels. Um, using that data to drive instruction, which leads to better teaching and eventually um improve student outcomes. So that's that's the Department of Education's rationale for this program. And I think there's, there's a lot of value to that. And we see even practitioners within the Milford Public Schools who are data-driven, we see the results move in a very positive direction.
Great.
And it's all good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Kevin. Thanks.
Next up, we have uh new business. Any members have any new business?
No.
No, Don?
Well, it's, it's not on there, the subcommittees. Wow. I notice it wasn't on there. Saw it go over the safety and security. Newly named the Little Mike and Don Tapper. But uh, we did have a meeting on Tuesday with the police officers, principals, assistant principals. Bob invited the security team here at the high school, which I thought was a great addition, as well as the secretaries from a follow-up uh meeting that Mike and I had had two weeks ago. So a- and again, we, you know, as I mentioned earlier, things like the speakers and the locks all came up from their drills that they did at each school uh over the past uh week or two. And then uh Rob also commented briefly on it, but the uh security cards. And so for example, at Brookside, they have, you know, the the white card where it allows you to gain access and the software tracks who just entered the building, what time, you know, those types of things. And two of the other secretaries in the meeting actually brought a log from, you know, they just, knowing what we were going to talk about, tracked how many times they're disrupted to let faculty into the building. And one of them uh had to stopper day forty-something times in one day, and another one fifty-three times, you know, to stop and and just let these individuals in, which that card will eliminate all of that. And it's because one of the things that Mike, I think really shocked Mike and I was, you know, at the high school, you have the 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 woman, is her name Karen at the front door?
Karen, yes, yeah.
Karen at the front door, uh processing the people as they come in. You have the security guards, uh, you know, taking, escorting people around, and then you have the secretaries taking the phone calls and those types of things. Where at the other schools, all of those duties fall on one individual. And so that's where it's really, really tough and to to do your day when you're being disrupted so many times. So we, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out a way to um come up with a a process for all of the schools that handles those duties. And then Bob's working on providing some training for them to really support them and help them with their their anxiety, to be honest with you, of trying to juggle all of this and what if something ever bad happened and and, you know. So it's, it's, it's just listening to them, trying to find a a way to resolve this. You know, uh, Rob mentioned, you know, we're, we're evaluating our technology needs, and that's going to be a long process. So it's not a, you know, snap your fingers and it's fixed type of situation, but uh, one of the other things that I think we need to really evaluate and Bob, I'm going to ask you to work with the principals on this at the, at the other schools, is, is there a resource need, especially during those uh peak times that they brought up during the meeting, to assist them uh with that, you know, with those processes that that you map out, but um, really, again, it was just another great meeting of getting all of these individuals together and just hearing, you know, the, you know, from their side of it. Um, the impact that some of the decisions that we make have on the guys and and girls down at the street level. It's uh
What Scott just said, the ivory tower.
Yeah.
The decisions we make and the poor people on the front line.
But that's it.
Thanks, Donnie.
Thanks.
Mike, anything to add to? Any other members have any? New business, any old business?
Just a, a quick piece. I had asked at the last meeting um about the uh, the pavers or the the bricks for the walkway. I know that you had sent out an email on that. I was wondering if, I brought it up on camera and wanted to make sure you just kind of addressed that. I know there was some conversation with the chairman of the fields committee, um, with the finance committee. I'm always interested when they're building community fields on school property, which I realize is ultimately still town property. Um, and yet the schools are not involved in that conversation. So um, I was wondering if you could just, for the benefit of anybody that is watching, give a quick verbal update on the pavers, and then also um, I I'd be interested to find out kind of what's the process and kind of where are we with our softball fields and I guess what I didn't know was a continuation of the project, but with the, with regards to fields.
Yeah, I, shortly after the meeting, um, a couple weeks ago, I reached out to Tom Williams, and I provided the committee with an update, but for the benefit of people who may be watching, there was a they were, as I recall on this, you may have to help me with this, I forgot about that email from a couple weeks ago, but they were waiting on the orders. They had all the brick orders. They're still hoping to get some more of those and to see what's going to happen with the location of the concession stand. And once that continuation that you mentioned is in place, then the bricks and the pavers will all be um, will be placed. As you know, there's a, there's a school committee paver that's part of that, um, part of that collection. Uh, with respect to the project, um, the expansion, I I I apologize that I don't know the details of that. I I'm not aware of what's happening. I don't know if Kathy, if you know, if Rob has been in the loop with, I imagine Rob Quinn, and I'll follow up to follow up with the committee on that. I don't know the status. Just what I happened to hear or read about like anybody else in the committee does. So there's not a um, there's not a good communication that I'm aware of that tells the school department where we are with respect to those projects. Doesn't mean that Rob might not be having that with the Parks Department and with um, uh, with the athletic fields group, but I'll find out.
Yeah, so here would be my ask, and obviously the it'd be great to get a fields update project, a a fields update on that, since it is, ultimately, it's a, it's a school field as well. I I would, I would ask if we can get the fields chairman to come in and give us an update on where we are with it. Um, whether it's going to town meeting or anything of that. I mean, from a school, from a taxpayer perspective and from a school board perspective. I mean, we're quite frankly about to ask for potentially a whole lot of money from town meeting. Um, it'd be great to find out if we're, if there's somebody else that may be asking for money on our behalf at the same time.
Certainly.
A piece of that coming down to the finance committee, if you like. There's an article in the warrant for two hundred thousand, it's two hundred thousand dollars for the completion of the uh concession stands slash restrooms in um softball field, and the finance committee actually uh recommended favorable action on that for two hundred thousand dollars, and that is going to go forward.
Okay. Yeah, I I just, if there's somebody that's asking for money on our behalf, it'd be great if we could kind of be at least in the loop.
You bet.
And I think a way to improve some communication on that would be to have the chairman of the fin- of the fields committee come and join us and give us a quick update. Um, doesn't ask for, he's not asking for permission, but at least keep us in the loop. I think that's fair.
You got it.
And, and that, on that, you know, from from that letter that you sent out, my understanding was um, the boosters was waiting for that concession stand to be completed.
Yeah.
And that they didn't even want to manufacture the bricks because they were afraid that they'd store them and get broken in while they're waiting, right? And plus the storage space.
That's right.
Um, but the, but the other thing is, is, you know, I I'm kind of anxious to find out when that concession stand's going to be done, because right now at the games, they have kind of like a, I don't know what, what you want to call it, like a
It's a lunch wagon.
A wa- lunch wagon, thank you. Up on the top of the hill, which to me is just, you know, a nightmare waiting to happen. I don't know why they don't have it down on the flat level land to somewhere.
If I never be able to get back up the hill.
Yeah, right now, they have it right at the top, but on the side of the tennis court, so that, you know, the kids don't mind running up, ru- running up and down the hill, but it, and I just as far as placement goes, I think it's, it's absolutely crazy, but um, so we'll, it would be interesting to find out exactly when that's going to be started and completed.
Yeah, I'll see when the chairman's available to do an update for the committee.
Get a before-town meeting, that'd be great. About now, because that's next week, so.
Yeah, so it'll have to be.
After.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? We do have an executive session this evening to discuss a grievance that we could not otherwise discuss an open session without compromising the position of the parties involved. Um, that does require a roll call.
Yes. Yes.